Please let's take our seats. Welcome to this evening's work session. Our first order of business is to ask if any commissioner would like to discuss any preliminary items for the next BOC meeting.
None, none at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll need to get with someone from zoning to discuss one of my zoning items, but we can do that sometime this week.
All right, any other items? All right, well, let's get to the work session discussion items. First one up is Clayton County Public Schools 2022-23 school year. Update by Superintendent Dr. Morsi Beasley. And as he's coming, so I make sure I don't forget, November 11th, Veterans Day. We have to acknowledge our veterans and all that they have done and continue to do for this country to keep us the greatest country in the world. We owe you a debt that cannot be repaid, and we are truly appreciative of everything that you have done. Let's give them a round of applause, please. And let me, yes, let's give them a standing round of applause. And if you are a veteran, remain standing while everybody else sits, please. If you're a veteran, please remain standing. On behalf of the B-
(inaudible)
Still remember that number, don't you?
(inaudible)
All right, thank you for your service, sir. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we would like to just give you a little token of appreciation.
Aww.
So, thank you so much for your service. Mr. Stanford, every time I see you standing, I forget that you actually served for a little while. Thank you for your service. The what?
The gentleman in the back.
Yes. Thank you all very much. Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, good evening to everyone, to all the commissioners. We're thankful for the opportunity to come and address you. It's hard to believe it's been another year, and this year is moving by quickly. I'm joined by Jada Dawkins, as you all well know, our Chief of Communications. She's prepared a document that I believe everyone has received that we're encouraging everyone to review. I'll just share a few updates. As you well know, we started school this year. We're face-to-face. We do have a virtual learning program that has about 800 students in it, K through, 3 through 12, but it's going well. Our executive director that leads that program is clearly working to ensure that those students, they get virtual instruction, but they also have face-to-face events that are built into their school day. But everyone else beyond the 800 students, they are face-to-face. We are pleased that this year we opened the new facility at Morrow High School, and we are working diligently, working diligently to design our new arena, if you will, or student convocation center, which will be, as you all already know, at the old Sears building location at the South Lake Mall area. That location will house not only an 8,500-seat arena, but also our college and career academy. The goal is to have a Boys and Girls Club, and as you all have already heard, the junior achievement, I want to call it the Biz Finance Park Discovery Center. The words escaped me, Discovery Center. So if you've been to the World Congress Center, if you ever participated, or at least observed, students are participating in the Biz Town, in the Finance Park, they get a chance to learn about financial management and how to administrate, and they have a little city down there. As a matter of fact, it's financed and supported by the Chick-fil-A Foundation. So we're very excited that we'll be able to have our very own discovery center right here in Clayton County to be supported clearly by Clayton County Public Schools, but also utilized by school districts in this, I will say, south of I-20 that may not have the opportunity to go to the World Congress Center because they serve some of the larger school districts in the metro area. And if you're not already scheduled to get to the World Congress Center to experience the discovery center, it's very challenging to do so. So we're excited that Clayton County will have that facility right here in our school district. You should know that we are in design right now for the new Forest Park Middle School, and we are working toward our next SPOLOST referendum, which will occur in March of 2023. I believe it's March 21st of 2023. It will include six early learning centers, four new STEM elementary schools, a new North Clayton High School, a modernized Lovejoy High School. You should know clearly, we've got to continue to update our HVAC systems, we've got to continue to do what it takes to repair roofs in our school district, so we need the support of this community. Without the passing of SPOLOST 7, the projects that I just mentioned will not get done. There is no other, there is no Plan B. The Constitution here in the state of Georgia allows us to pass a SPOLOST, the community to pass a SPOLOST for capital improvement, and that is our only source of revenue for capital improvement. So again, March 21st, 2023, SPOLOST 7. We'd like to share that we're pleased to announce, I'm sure you've heard already, that we have the highest grad rate that we've had since the grad rate was recalculated in 2011. We're at 79.6. We thought we'd hit the 80% mark, but that's okay. We're getting close. We have a few schools that have hit the 90s. Of course, two are at 100%. Only one school remains in the 70s. One high school remains in the upper 70s, and so we'll get that school in the 80s, I believe, in the next, in this coming up year, upcoming year. But we're excited that we've got more students doing what they need to do in order to be successful at the post-secondary level. Right now, about 52% of our students are completing a career pathway, and if you don't know this, you should. If our students complete a career pathway, whether it be career technology, world language, fine arts, or advanced academic, they graduate at a rate of 94% to 98%. Therefore, it's incumbent upon all of our families and all of our students and all of our schools to ensure that our students are completing a career pathway, or a pathway, at least one pathway, which increases the likelihood of them graduating from high school and going on to experience post-secondary options. I'd like to thank this Board of Commissioners for your support of our schools. We continue, of course, to vaccinate. We continue to provide grocery opportunities. We continue to offer food pantries in our schools. We continue to teach reading and math and do everything else that is necessary to ensure that our children are learning at high levels. You should know that our mobility rate as of 2021, it has dropped from about 32.3% in 2019 to 12.8%. And so we're no longer the highest in the state, and we attribute that to all of the work that has been done, not only in the school system, but even by the county, to stabilize our families during this pandemic. And so I want to say that our mobility rate is one of the lowest in the metro areas. It's either lower than the Cab or Gwinnett. I can't remember which one is higher, but we are doing well relative to holding on to our families and supporting them and helping our students to be successful. As you well know, and I'll close with this, this year we took the Georgia Milestones, which is our state assessment. Our scores took a decline, which we anticipated, given we were virtually learning for about a year or more. And so it's a reset year for us, so wherever we are, as we were increasing prior to the pandemic, we know that this year is our new baseline data, and we'll work to increase going forward. We are encouraging our families to really think about ensuring that our students participate in those extended learning opportunities, not just during the school day, but beyond the school day, after school, Saturday school, summer school, because we do know that our students could benefit from increased learning opportunities. We will be encouraging our nonprofits that serve students in the areas of reading and math to apply for grants that we'll offer to basically help us as a school system, help our children improve in their literacy reading scores and their math achievement as well. That information will be released in the upcoming days. I'll pause here to see if you have any questions or comments, feedback for us as we continue this year. We're addressing discipline, we're addressing academics, you name it. We are addressing that, and our students are, for the most part, I will say, for the most part, they're behaving and doing very well, they're learning, but as you well know, there's a lot of work that we've got to continue to do to move all of our schools forward.
Well, let me say this, Doc. You've got a lot going on in the school system, and we're proud of the work that's going on, so I commend you, your staff, and the administrators who's making it happen, and the Board of Education members as well. Seems like everybody's working together as well as this board, and other community stakeholders for one purpose, and that's to make sure that we push our children to be the very best that they can be. He did not, or cannot advocate for these SPOLOST, but it's very important that we tell everyone about the SPOLOST and the importance of it, because when you pass it, you're passing it for our children and the generations of their children, and children so forth. And that builds a better Clayton County. You cannot build these capital projects without a funding source, and this is the excellent funding source for us all to be able to utilize, to make sure that our children have the very best that we can give them here in Clayton County. Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
No questions. Thank you, Doc, for your presentation. The clear book bags that I think the school provided some this year, are you all going to do that in the future, or next year?
More than likely, we will. We use federal funds, and so if the funds are available, more than likely, we will. But we're really encouraging parents, even if they, if we provide the book bags, to go ahead and buy one, because the supply may be limited. As you well know, once we announced that, many other districts announced that as well. So I'm encouraging parents, even if we supply a clear book bag, please, if you are in a store and you see one, and you have children and you can afford it, get the clear book bag. Because we do know that supply chain issues are, you know, they do exist.
And if they already have one, can they get one from the school?
Well, I mean, we don't just ask them, "Do you have a book bag?" We'll just distribute the book bag, so I don't see-
My little one said, "Well, I already have one." I'm like, "No, you get it from the school too."
Well, they can, yeah. We don't, I mean, we're not going into your homes and figuring out what you have and then giving you a book bag. So if they say they want a book bag, and we're distributing book bags, they can get a book bag. But I would encourage everyone to just do their part, do their part, so we can ensure that every student has the benefit of having a clear book bag. And I should say, since we're talking about book bags, that, you know, we put body scanners in our schools this year, very unobtrusive, and we are very pleased that the number of weapons significantly declined. And so that's really not an issue. Now, we've just got to continue to work with our students on how to respond to their peers when they're in conflict with one another.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, Dr. Beasley, and for all that you and your staff has done.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Conley Road interchange feasibility study presentation, transportation development.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, we have our engineering consultants, Atlas Technical Consultants, here to present the kind of accumulation of a little over years' worth of study on the potential for interchange at Conley Road 285. So at this point, I'm going to call up Todd Long from Atlas and the rest of his team, and he'll introduce them as they go through the presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Board, Chairman, rest of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm Todd Long with Atlas Technical Consultants, and our team here tonight is Ellen Manche, who will be doing the bulk of the presentation, and was project manager on the study. And also, we have Steve Daniel over here to the far left, and Shelley Lamar, who works with SERM, is also on our team as well. So we're excited to be here today, so I'm going to turn it over to Ellen, so go through the slides.
Thanks, Doc. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Ellen Manche. I'm with Atlas Technical Consultants, been working with Jeff and Keith over the past year, trying to look at this feasibility study. So what we're going to cover today is primarily the existing conditions, the key tasks that the Atlanta Regional Commission has really asked us to look at, because it's a grant from ARC and Clayton County, both funded together, so this feasibility study needed to go through this checklist. So existing conditions, future traffic when the project really opens, stakeholder public engagement, which Shelley is going to cover, and then alternatives and feasibility analysis. Primarily, we looked at, you know, five or six different options for the interchange between US 41 and Jonesboro Road there. So we looked at traffic analysis that has to be covered for this study to demonstrate the feasibility itself, the roadway design and the ASHTO guidelines, the GDOT guidelines, and above all, economic analysis. We hired, we had a firm, KB Advisory Group, that specifically conducted economic analysis without and with interchange to demonstrate the feasibility for this project. And to culminate, we had a very transparent process to cover the preferred conceptual As you know, District 2 Commissioner Gail Hamrick, as well as District 1 Commissioner Elica Anderson, they both were on our stakeholder committee, and this study area really covers both their districts. So we wanted to make sure, and we recognized the importance of having these two key stakeholders on our project. And that's pretty much, you know, a study area where we looked at the entire project from a traffic operations point of view, how the traffic flows, as well as looking at the alternatives. The purpose for this was basically, it's developing a feasibility study, which is one of the first steps in the planning process before you embark onto preliminary engineering and everything. So you've got to work on this feasibility study and to add an interchange, you know, at Conley Road, which has got an existing bridge over 70, I mean, 285, but there is not a access to 285. And the goals are primarily to improve safety, mobility, and access to all roadway users, primarily, and we have some short-term and long-term goals to go with that. And in the existing conditions, I'm not going to go through everything here, but we met all the requirements for a feasibility study. We conducted new traffic counts that are going to go into the next steps of the study. We did peak hour and also roadway tube counts. We also looked at every, you know, entity that had been doing studies in this area to demonstrate that, you know, we have looked at other studies and other projects that are happening. We also did a preliminary environmental screening based on desktop, as well as wind chill surveys, because this is where you spot any, you know, fatal flaws, you know, in the study. So basically, we did that to make sure that there is no issues with having an interchange at this location. And we also coordinated with utility companies. Again, SERM did a good job of coordinating with all the utility companies, and both existing as well as future conflicts. That's pretty much, you know, in a nutshell, what future traffic forecasting entailed. We worked with Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, their travel model for both the 2030 year, which is the potential open year, and the 2050, which is going to be the design year. So the ARC model was used by a firm we had on the team, Cambridge Systematics, that worked extensively with ARC on all the future travel conditions. These are some of the GDOT projects. As you can see, there's quite a few projects that are happening, and once this Conley Road interchange comes up, that'll be a direct connection to your, you know, international terminal, and right now, that's lacking, because if people come on 75 and the other way are on 285 but not 285 in this direction, it'll provide a direct access, you know, from Conley Road into the international terminal. And as you can see, every project that is shown with the PI number is all the GDOT projects that are planned in this area. So it'll definitely add more value by having this project and this access specifically.
So just to give you an overview of our stakeholder program, again, it's already been noted that we have both the wonderful commissioners as part of our team. We held four of our Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings over the course of this project. We've had two public meetings. One was virtual, and then the last one, which is about three weeks ago, was in person. It was an open house. We'll be going forward, we'll be working with Valerie Fuller to get the information that was presented at the last public meeting up on your website, so that anybody in the future can see what we have been talking about. Here's our committee, key members, including your economic development folks, of course, transportation, the airport, the CIDs, as well as Delta Airlines and others. City of Forest Park were within our stakeholder group. We also did one extra presentation directly for the Atlanta Airport CIDs, north and south, so that they would be intimately knowledgeable about the project. I think that's it.
Thanks, Shelley. And the goal was to mainly get, you know, input and guide the study too, so we can demonstrate to ARC that it was definitely a stakeholder and public involvement involved. So this is quickly a nutshell of what the alternatives and feasibility analysis entailed. Obviously, like I mentioned earlier, we looked at five different alternatives, along with the no build, and did the environmental full detailed, you know, fatal flaw analysis. The development analysis is really interesting, because when we looked at the existing study area, this area definitely was below the Clayton County, you know, level in terms of, you know, whether it's, you know, EJ environmental issues or, you know, overall EJ population, you know, this definitely an area that can benefit from an interchange and the addition of the fusion of industrial and other land uses that come with the addition of an interchange. As part of this study, we looked at the concept level, you know, MS4, which is going to be looking at the stormwater management alternatives. That's something that we documented, and like I said, this is a very transparent process, and both GDOT and ARC will see this process as part of the concept report. Our economic team definitely looked at the other interchanges that were done in the metro area, and they took that information as to what happened once the interchange opened to kind of see what development really happens. Mostly, it came back like industrial flex space and retail. Those are the two predominant categories that come back as showing significant growth. And they ran some numbers, and again, these are very preliminary and kind of, I would say, order of magnitude at this point. They did see a lot of development already happening. The warehouse development is happening near Gilbert Road and Conley area. We took that into consideration. The induced growth with this interchange itself is going to be well over $115,000, I mean, square feet, sorry. And our team member, KB Advisory Group, definitely looked at potential five-year revenues and sales tax-wise. They kind of looked at current breakdown and gave you the revenues by type, so all this will be documented, you know, in terms of sales taxes versus property taxes, what can be benefited. So quickly going through, this traditional diamond interchange was looked at, and one with the CD roads extension, and I'll show you the picture, but the ramps, braided ramps, as well as the double loop ramps were looked at. So to quite quickly kind of show you this Conley Road right here and Gilbert Road, as you can see, some of the development with OA development is already happening, they're building as we speak on Gilbert Road. So once we found out that our diamond, you know, interchange will be kind of conflicting with their development that they have plans for in the future, we kind of had to work backwards and look at other options too. So I just wanted to kind of let you all know, typically, this is what, you know, the feds and the GDOT would like to see, like a traditional diamond, but, you know, in terms of right-of-way issues or whatnot, we ended up doing a different interchange. And again, this is just a kind of overall layout here, but as we go in here, so we ended up looking at an option that was a preferred option to see both the northbound on-ramp as well as the southbound off-ramp being loop ramps to avoid that conflict with the development. So that's how it would look in the future if that project goes through, is to have two loops, basically, and then the other two would be traditional diamond type of ramps. As a close-up again, as you can see, we definitely avoided the conflict with that potential development, because we don't want to do something that would avoid or preclude the Here are some quick numbers, and these are just the number of lanes that you see there. Right now, there is a CD system between, you know, 75 and 1941, and that's going to be extended all the way to Jonesboro Road, and that's the best way to operate. And anytime you take this feasibility study and go to an IJR, which is the Interchange Justification Report, the Federal Highway Administration always wants to know, are you keeping the level of service on the freeway the same, or are you making it better? If it gets worse, they will not approve any additional access. So that's what we try to do, to make sure that the level of service stays the same or gets better in the future. And these are just some summary analysis, again, showing, you can see that the problem is right there, between 41 and Conley Road, there's a level of service F and some Ds. And this is in the no build. When nothing happens, that's what's going to happen, is F and Ds. And once you have our preferred alternative with the interchange, you'll see mostly Bs and Cs there in that study area. Again, this is the preferred alternative, we're showing the weaving lens. We try to make sure the safety is, again, another important factor for federal highway, so we try to make sure there's not any weaving conflicts, and for that reason, the loop ramps also helped out. Just quickly summarizing the overall cost, again, this is from a preliminary level feasibility study. We haven't really entered the preliminary engineering phase where costs can be updated, but at this time, what we're looking at is a ballpark number of about $85 million. And that includes typically, ARC likes to see these breakdown, the PE breakdown, right-of-way utilities, environmental mitigation. This is again, based on the wetlands and streams that we know of at this point, and the construction cost. These are the breakdown. When you start trying to program this project, ARC will look for these breakdowns. So that's why we kind of broke it down that way. And just finally, to close out, the next steps in the project timeline, once we have this feasibility study, Keith will be working with ARC to get this study approved, and the next step is, logical step, is to go through GDOT and federal highway and do the interchange justification report. That's the federal approval that's needed to go into the concept, which we are doing a draft right now, so the approval could be done, and then enter into the preliminary plans phase, which is really the process that starts with environmental detail studies and right-of-way acquisition, and finally go into project construction. So we look at it roughly from a consultant work point of view and agency approvals, about seven to eight years, but, you know, there's not any time here shown for procurement, that's another year or two. So we're looking at about eight to 10 years roughly by the time you open the project to construction. With that, I just, I want to ask questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. I just want to say thank you to everyone who's participated in this, in the feasibility studies, and just with the CID going through Conley. I know Conley is one of my areas that really needs economic development. They have a food desert, they need grocery stores, and I just think that this is going to be a great project that is going to better the quality of life for the people of Conley and just the people of Clayton County. So again, thank you all, and I look forward to continuing and working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else?
Well, I was going to ask, I know you've mentioned that diamond exchange or whatever.
Interchange, uh-huh.
Interchange, right. When getting off at that, you know, once it's finished or whatever, will we have that roundabout-type roadway, or will it just be the regular red light on and off?
So Commissioner Hamrick, that will be looked at as part of the concept approval, and the roundabout and traffic signal, traditional traffic signal, all the potential traffic controls will be evaluated, and GDOT and federal highway will approve that.
Okay.
So we'll be definitely looking at all the options.
Right. I used to say that the many roundabouts were, you know, so dangerous or whatever, have gone through so many in the last so many months or whatever, until, you know, it seems to work, it appears to work, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, appreciate the presentation. Good to see you again, Todd.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Grants Management Division update.
Oh, hold on. I do have one thing. Remember the conversation we had the other day? Have that been discussed, or anything's been worked out on that?
Commissioner, referring to the OA development?
Yes.
We are in the process, I don't know if Keith or Jeff had an opportunity to talk to Josh yet, but the goal was to, considering that, they did come up with an alternative to talk to him about what that alternative would be, so I'll yield to Jeff to see if they had an opportunity to talk to him yet.
We haven't specifically addressed the issue with them yet, because it's really not an issue anymore with the alternative redesign. It stays off the corner where they were proposing to construct a future building. They've been a part of the study all along, so we don't expect any issues coming out from it.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure, but someone has talked with Josh?
There's been ongoing conversations with them, but we wanted to present the direction tonight before we go back and show them this is the preferred alternative, but he knows about it. about it.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Merkison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you this evening to bring you an update to the presentation that we did back in September, when we kind of outlined what the current status of Grants Management was in the county, and kind of laid out the multiple divisions that grants are currently either brought into, managed, dispensed, and then tracked and reported, and then kind of some of the issues that we've seen kind of with that process. So the board tasked myself and the COO to kind of get together with staff, identify potential solutions. So what we're bringing for you tonight is our recommendation of how to move forward to hopefully gain consensus of the board to continue this effort and then bring back kind of a more formal outline and kind of get into the who or the actual positions at the fifteenth board meeting. So the purpose of this, as we stated, was to outline the recommendation to actually centralize the Grants Management process into a standalone department. One of the things that we talked about in our September meeting was as we met with all of the different departments and leaders who currently have some interaction with grants or the grants process, we kind of broke that process down into three primary components, those being sourcing and the application process with grants, the programming and compliance portion, and then, of course, the financial reporting. And within all three of those categories, there are both direct and indirect forward-facing services as we interact with not only our internal stakeholders within the county, but also our external stakeholders in the public for those grants that we are actually infusing into our community and into our business sectors. So as we met and we continued to kind of outline and streamline, we did notice not redundancies in job titles, but kind of some redundancies in functions. So what we tried to do was work through all those functions and break them up into categories that make sense and kind of where people would start to serve in a centralized Grants Management process. So as you can kind of see, what we've outlined, the sourcing and application is to identify grants, the application process, B O C approvals, budget implications, budget allocations, extensions, and then I'll circle back to the yellow as we come back through the grant cycle. Once we get out of the sourcing and application process, we get into the programming and compliance, which will deal with procurement, budget alignment, the operations of the grant, which will include terms, conditions, participants, and like I said, those could be both either internal and/or external stakeholders. And then obviously, interaction with the user department liaisons if they are internal grants that are being managed by a specific department. And then we wind up with the financial reporting, which includes some daily financial oversight, expenditure reviews, financial compliance, the periodic financial reporting, and then, of course, grant closeout. And why I've looped this into a cycle is as we get down to the end of grants, we recognize that as we go through the periodic financial reporting, there may be some actions that need to be taken place through the Programming and Compliance Division as a result of those periodic financial reportings. Once we get through the financial report actions, then that may result in a refund or a de-obligation of grant funds, whether the project came in under budget or the grant period expired, excuse me, before we could get all the funds out. And then, of course, if there's any refunds or de-obligations, can those funds be reallocated? If so, then you see the arrow kick back up and we start the process all over again. So this system does create a checks and balances within the grant process. We've streamlined some things and then made it very logical for how grants will flow. So we hope that this process will make it quicker, easier, faster, to not only source the grants, but onboard the grants, and then make sure that we're in compliance from both the programming standpoint, but also the financial components as we move forward. So the recommended structure, we've kept this very high level, but the recommended structure would be to create a Grants Director. A lot of these positions are already, or all of these positions minus the Director are already in existence. We've just streamlined them and reallocated them. So the Director would be a new position. The Admin Assistant is already housed within the HUD Division, and then you see the three divisional components that would report directly to that Director. And then how we've broken out, just by dealing with current function and current management, like I said, we have not changed any job titles. We've not looked at how we may need to reclass a group of employees. We would leave that up to the Director once he or she is chosen to be able to get down into the weeds with the programming. But we've allocated the sourcing and application, the programming and compliance, and the financial reporting as all positions that are currently throughout the county. These positions reside with either in the Office of Performance Management, Community Development, and the HUD's Program Management Division, and/or in Finance. And of course, most of the ones that currently reside in Finance are still in a financial capacity. However, we did move over the HUD Financial Compliance Manager that currently resides in Community Development into that financial side. The one other thing that we did too was we laid out specifically the Office of Performance Management and those positions that are either grant-funded or part-time. All of the other positions are full-time positions, or they're funded through the HUD Grants that currently come in through the county. So as we begin to move forward, we kind of talked just a little bit about this. All grants approved excepted by the B O C, there are some policy and discussion points that we will need to have as we start to craft out what the standard operating procedures and policies of the Grants Management Division would be. There are some implications around the courts and our constitutional officers for how grants are onboarded with them. However, from a management perspective, we want to make sure that that's all codified appropriately, and then when we look at some policy needs that we would need to do, how do we handle ratification votes when we have grants that come in that are time-sensitive? And then, of course, we do have reoccurring and statutory grants that may not necessarily require an application process to acquire them. They're just either codified already in the code, or they're grants that we get on a regular basis. An example with that would be our Emergency Management Performance Grant. Because we provide an emergency management service for the county, we get a grant every year. It's not an application process, they just send it. But when that happens, then we have to bring that and formally ratify that and accept it, but it doesn't necessarily require an application. So the problem is, we have a lot of current practices that aren't necessarily codified by policy, and how we need to handle that. So part of what this Grants Division would do is look at each one of these categories, let's get that down into a policy that we can then bring back before this board for discuss it, so that we're making sure that these grants are brought through the county in the same manner every time we do it. It'll streamline it, it hopefully will remove a lot of the confusion around it and prevent us from having to send money back to where it came from, which we obviously don't want to do. Some grants are just, they're short timeframe, and we just simply can't expend the funds. That is what it is, but we want to make sure that we've done everything we can do from the county standpoint to do that. So what this presentation is asking this board for is just a general consensus to move forward with bringing forth a formal structure for a standalone Grants Department as soon as practicable in dealing with Ms. Pam and Human Resources and the COO's office. So with that, I will pause and answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions for the chief?
Well, first off, I'm thinking that if this was already in place, we probably would not have had to have that special call meeting earlier tonight. You think that's... Because we would have something in place where those funds could already be channeled through this process that you're talking about, you know. But anyway, that's something. But I'm glad you said that about not sending money back. I have a problem with that, that we get so tangled up with the process and procedure and all, and then money is just sitting there, and nobody's working on it or doing anything with it. So I'm glad that this will, hopefully, we can avoid that in the future, and spend funds, like you say, timely and all. Now, I'm thinking that this will entail all the grants that come into the county. Would that include senior services, what Parks and Rec receive, and all, and on the fire side, and I think on the police side?
So to answer, Commissioner, yes. It will be a centralized repository for all grants to come in, so that we can ensure that if the user department has submitted an application, at a minimum, the Grants Division or the Grants Department will have an opportunity to vet that, to ensure that we get it out in a timely manner and we're meeting all the requirements of the grant application. And so we recognize in some instances is that we don't know the intricate details about what is needed from the grant side. By having this department, we will ensure that we have people in place to ensure they have vetted all the application requirements, and so it hopefully will minimize that impact on not getting grants out to the community in a timely fashion.
Okay. And I see on one of the slides, you had that about the housing, because I think we get quite a bit of money on the housing side and all. So would that be included in here?
Yes, ma'am. So all of the HUD grants that are currently managed, probably seventy-five percent of the org structure you see is the current HUD Grants Division. So one of the things I did want to draw your attention to, to more specifically answer your question, Commissioners, under Programming and Compliance, you see you come down and you see the User Department Liaison. So this does not replace the User Department as far as their involvement in grants. There are grants that come directly to me as your Emergency Management Director. There are grants that come directly to Chief Roberts. U A C grants and a lot of the law enforcement grants that come from them come directly to him. So it would be incumbent upon myself, Chief Roberts, Parks and Rec, or these other department heads where grants may come directly to us from a statutory or regulatory matter, that we then circulate those over to the Grants Management Division, make sure that they're aware of them, make sure that they're helping us from the compliance standpoint. Because we all know, in our world, it's nine-one-one is blowing up off the hook, and we've got plenty to keep us busy there, so we want to make sure that we as department heads don't miss something with the management of that grant. So it will be, this will be a joint venture between now what is, what will be a centralized department and our department heads to make sure that we're keeping track of all of these grants. Because the problem is, a lot of them too, your next year's allocation may be based upon your historical spend rate. So if U A C provides two-hundred thousand dollars to the county for whatever, and we only manage to spend fifty, it's going to be hard for us to go get two-hundred thousand again at the next allocation. So they'll take that and give it to somebody who did get to spend that money. It may not be any fault of the User Department, could be a number of reasons why. What we're trying to do is whittle down the number of reasons why, and just get to a centralized point so that this is moving efficiently. So we're not taking department heads out of the mix, we're giving them additional resources to help them become a little bit more efficient with the Grants Management.
And I know for the past eighteen months or so, money has just been coming in. Now, are we going to have somebody in place that will actually apply and seek out grants?
Great question, Commissioner. So the answer to that is yes. The other part that I think will give us a greater advantage is that by having a centralized department, we won't have to rely so heavily on a third-party administrator to actually facilitate getting the money out in the community, because we have a department handling a lot of that. When Chief Merkison talked about the forward-facing piece, so like our call center, they will probably interface more with the community when we have, like, the ARPA grant, the E R A funds, one and two. It'll give us a better opportunity to handle that internally, opposed to having to worry about a third-party administrator handling a lot of that. Now, I won't say that will alleviate that altogether, but it will minimize the need to have a third-party administrator in most instances.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
And that was the same thing that Commissioner Hambrick was asking in seeking out those grants. As we look at some of the grants that come from Congress, such as from Senator Warnock, Ossoff, and those grants that could possibly come from Congressman Williams or any of our congressmen, how are we going to make sure we acquire those grants? You're saying that other, you said the person who seeks out those grants, they will be synchronously working with these people in order to make sure that we get those grants?
Yes, ma'am. So a part of, I guess, part two B of this presentation that we'll bring back at another work session, there's, we'll be bringing forth kind of a policy management software that will kind of help the county streamline all of its policies, but baked within that is a Grants Management process as well, that actually goes and looks for the grants, identifies those grants, and it hits all of the major sectors, whether it's law, fire, EMS, government grants, private grants, nonprofit grants. It looks at all of these different areas and opportunities and then brings those to the forefront. The other thing, by having a centralized repository for these grants, is once we start to get this out to our congressmen and our congressional offices, whether that's local elected offices at the state level or our federal elected officers, then now all of those notices, those NOFOs and opportunities are coming into one centralized area, then they can be farmed out. Right now, I may get them, I may get a phone call saying, hey, there's congressionally-directed funding. We were lucky enough to get some from Senator Ossoff or Commissioner Hambrick's district, but, so that we make sure that we're getting these opportunities and applying for them. We've shown we can be successful with two-point-six million for the watershed, and then the phone call we had over the weekend about the health. So it's about starting to funnel these all into that one area, but that additional program will help with that.
And I just, you know, and I just want everybody to know, you know, we always, I always hear, you know, from Congressman Scott's office or any of them, that we have this money, but I just want to make sure that we're tapping into this money, and thank you all for having that additional resource, a person for that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So how is this going to impact the other elected officials, especially constitutional officers, in terms of the grants that they apply for? Will it go through the same process?
Well, part of our discussion has been because the constitutional officers don't necessarily follow under the B O C. We have to ensure that there is at least an opportunity to see how we onboard those respective requests from the constitutional officers. So clearly, it may not be a mandate, but clearly, we need to ensure that there's a process in place, because there might be a match, there might be some other opportunities that we can take on. So we just need to make sure there is a footprint, a policy lens that talks specifically to the constitutional officers as how we go about getting the request in from their respective offices.
Basically, we're just getting a buy-in for cooperation to be able to decentralize the process.
That's correct.
So accountability is on all parts. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. I love the whole theory behind this. From the sourcing standpoint, will we be employing grant writers from within the Grant Management Department, or will they be external too? Prime example, fire has a grant. Who is actually taking the lead and doing the application for these grants?
Great question as well, Commissioner. So I think a lot of it is going to be predicated upon our initial assessment of the department. So if the board feels that this is the direction we want to head in, what we have to do is do an assessment of all the staff members, understanding that a lot of them are in place that probably will move over in said space, but there will be some additional areas or responsibilities they might need to take out. So we don't know the strength of those individuals from a grant-writing perspective, so we'll have to do an assessment of the staff and then make some additional recommendations after that.
So this is more the system to begin to manage that process to find out where the strengths and the weaknesses lie in going after that grant?
That is correct.
Okay. The other part is from a financial compliance. Will the financial compliance be pretty much one-hundred percent through the Grant Management process, or will they be integrated into our Finance Department as far as the audits and the other compliance issues?
Well, as Chief Merkison alluded to with the actual framework, so a lot of those individuals in the Grants Division of Finance will be part of this department. So those individuals will be integrated out of the Grants Department. So the financial piece will be captured, but it won't be segmented out through multiple departments, and I think that's one of the challenges that we have, because we have multiple departments trying to handle the grants process, but when it came to actual compliance and getting information in, sometimes it was very fragmented, and so we're trying to remove that.
Okay. And also, my last question. I know Chief had spoken about the recurring grants that come to your desk or come to Chief Roberts' desk. Will those, will we try to put those within this management process, which would alleviate some of the pressure for department heads to say, oh, I got this grant coming, I need to, do I need to apply, or do I not apply, but we've got to get it to finance? Does that, if that makes sense?
It does, yes, sir. So what we will work towards is part of the policy will be trying to identify what those statutory grants are, and then try to target when they're going to come into the county. So one of the things that we have to do from the Emergency Management Performance Grants is, it basically goes to pay half of the salaries and wages, so we have to know what that is, so we can make sure the budget covers the other half for salaries and wages. So part of this, and what this is going to help, is right now, it's a duck shoot, pretty much, with you're trying to figure out what the match is going to be, right? So how does Finance properly budget for potential matches if we're not one-hundred percent sure of which grants we may be going after, and then what are the requirements for those grants? So some grants suggest a match, but don't require it, but it would help you to be competitive, but we can't keep saying, yes, we'll go after two-and-a-half million dollars with a ten- But we, we can't keep saying, yes, we'll, we'll go after two-and-a-half million dollars with a ten percent match if finance doesn't know that we may have just put them on the hook for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So our thought process is, let's leverage the financial experts we have that's been dealing with grants to do that. And then to your point, the checks and balances to that is internal audit. And then let internal audit start to look at that and give us that second or third level of eyes on it at that point from a compliance.
One of the things, Commissioner, that is beneficial is that grants for the most part are very sick, they're, they're pretty time-sensitive, right? You have a, what we call a grant season. But what we're trying to do now is do a better job of forecasting. So while you would have the centralized department recognizing if a user department knows of several grants that are out there, if now you're providing information to the, to the Grants Department on the front end, then it gives us a better opportunity to actually get these grants awarded. Because now we're asking you to be more strategic in your process and being proactive and providing us information. Opposed oftentimes, we see a grant, you know, three weeks out and then we're trying to scramble around resources and try to get the grant back out. So if the user department is being, is forecasting what the needs may be, then it gives the Grants Department a better opportunity to, to increase our success rate as far as getting a grant, because we're forecasting the needs from the respective departments.
And my last one from, I guess, and this is more from a business process reengineering, which is what you all are doing here. I, I want to be cognizant that, that the mission of the Board of Commissioners is really taken into consideration because, and it goes back to what you're talking about, forecasting. We'll begin to aggressively and proactively look at grants that are out there to begin to meet our mission.
Good point.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Thank you both.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank, yes, that was very detailed and I appreciate that, because we've been needing that for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, CFO recommendations, Terminus, I guess, HR examples.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Hambrick, Commissioners, and good evening to our valued Clayton County citizens. Thank you. Human Resources really appreciates being a part of this process, and I'm going to keep my presentation brief. The purpose of this presentation is to present recommendations for the Chief Financial Officer vacant position. The views of this presentation represent the views of the Human Resources Department and team. Some supporting sources that we used is G-D-O-L Occupational Handbook, our industry leader, the Society of Human Resources Management. We did an internal survey and had discussions with key partner as well as the collaboration with Terminus based on their recommendation. In regards to our current structure, I think it's important to look at our current structure. The commission is the oldest form of government, it appeared in the early nineteen hundreds. Within our structure, we have had two that I'm aware of, executive leadership models. The first one is the county manager slash administrator model. That was prevalent in Clayton County in the mid-nineties, early two thousands. We went to the chief operating officer executive model in two thousand fourteen, that's when we transitioned to that, to that model. The executive slash administrative and legislative arms of government have been delegated to the executive team. Part of that executive team is the chief operating officer, our chief staff attorney, as well as the chief financial officer. The commission through majority vote retains all policymaking authority. The three teams that I have, the three individuals part of the executive staff, executive team, I should say, there have been certain levels of authority that have been delegated to these individuals in regards to these arms of government. But the commission through majority vote does retain all policymaking authority. When you talk about a CFO versus a finance director, if you'll take a look at your slides, you'll see we have a brief comparison. Of course, the job description can be whatever we deem it to be based on the role that the commission wants this individual to play. But in general, a chief financial officer is less transactional and more strategical. This person can even be seen as a financial advisor to the commission. Whereas a finance director is more transactional, less still strategical, but less strategic than the CFO. General expectations for the CFO would be involved in long-term planning, sound financial policies, investment management, looking at the financial growth. The recommended salary for this position is between one-fifty and one-eighty. A finance director, general expectations, and once again, the job description, we formulate that based on the goals and the strategic goals of the county. But generally, manage financial teams, manage specific functions within finance, analyze financial trends and so forth. The recommended salary for that is between a hundred and thirty thousand to one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. I want to go back here to investment management. Our CFO is actually the secretary to our pension board. I am also a member of the pension board, but HR is my forte. When I'm, and we have a pension board meeting coming up on Thursday, in that capacity, I find myself asking a lot of questions, even though I've been doing it now for about five years, I ask my, I ask a lot of questions. I'm known as the queen of questions when it comes to that particular area, because I want to make sure that my vote is, we're doing the best thing that we can. So someone with investment management experience is definitely critical, in my opinion, as the HR director for Clayton County, because that's huge. General considerations based on Human Resources research, here on the slide you will see some considerations when determining to hire a CFO. Two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in revenues, the complexity and the number of our revenue sources. Once again, investment management, because that person once again is the secretary to the pension board and is instrumental in making those investment decisions. As a matter of fact, that person kind of takes the lead in making those decisions. Forecasted steady growth, if the organization has forecasted steady growth over time, then a CFO is perhaps a better fit than a finance director. And also the organizational structure that I just went over. Structure and strategical goals are definitely critical, a critical part of the evaluation. Procurement, central services is the strategical experts in our purchasing and procurement for the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. And this department is headed by our highly talented Ms. Carol Rogers, who is a certified officer in that space. Terminus recommended reporting structure change for central services to report to the CFO. This is a recommendation that Human Resources does not agree with. Most notable is the unintended risk and scrutiny due to the transactional activities between central services and finance. Human Resources, we did do a survey and you do have some counties where procurement, this reporting structure exists. But Human Resources, we disagree with that recommendation. Lastly, Human Resources recommendation is to hire a chief financial officer with the pay range a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty, perhaps closer to a hundred and eighty if the candidate has financial certifications and a multi-dimensional work experience. Deputy Chief Financial Officer pay range one-thirty to one-forty-five. We're recommending to retain the current allocation of two. We currently have two DCFOs in place. And of course, assigned, they will be assigned to specialized areas of responsibilities. And I don't know, Mac, did you want to add something to that? Okay, all right.
Any questions?
I have a question. As far as the, we were talking about the duties, responsibilities of this CFO. And in, in my research, many of our CFOs who head companies throughout the United States, they have CPA backgrounds.
Yes, ma'am.
Can that be one of the requirements that we look at for, in hiring our CFO?
Most definitely, yes ma'am. And that's why I said, Commissioner, Dr. Anderson is the salary range perhaps closer to one-eighty if that person holds those type of degree, of those type of certifications, yes ma'am, most definitely.
Preferred.
Yes, yes, preferred, yes, absolutely.
Got to deal with what you're working with, right? But also, and I agree with this recommendation simply because of organization of our size and the amount of money that goes through our, our county coffers. We want to make sure that we have the best qualified person in place to give us some sound advice and counseling. So I'm just making mention that I agree with this type of structure.
Okay, I noticed you mentioned the form of government Clayton County had sometime back as far as county manager, then going to COO. So how long have we had the existence of a CFO?
The CFO position began in twenty-fourteen, yes ma'am, twenty-fourteen.
Prior to that, we had county, I mean, finance director.
Yes, ma'am, finance director, yes ma'am.
Any other questions? So what's the next step? If the board is looking to move forward with the CFO structure, well, we're already in that structure. But I would think that we would need to evaluate to Dr. Anderson's question about some preferred language within the qualifications.
So with the board, when we hired Terminus to look at a multitude of things, one of the things that we were coming back with is to figure out whether our present structure was representative of what this board wanted to see. But more importantly, whether or not the salary range would provide us an opportunity for a comparable individual to come in to take on the space. So part of Terminus' work, as well as working with HR and working with our interim CFO, the goal was to ensure that, one, y'all were good with the salary range and then from there, and the title. And if you were good with all of that, then we had our marching orders from this board as it pertains to posting of that said position, so that therefore we can go forth and try to get a candidate in space as soon as possible. So I think one of the questions is just getting consensus from this board about the structure in place. And we can put that in a form of a, I guess, a request to the board at the fifteenth board meeting, if that's the pleasure, and then we can go from there.
I think we have something left undecided, because Terminus has recommended one thing and HR is saying that they don't agree. So are we to make that decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right, so we'll put that, we'll, we'll make note of Terminus' recommendation as well as HR. And then of course, if the board, whatever the pleasure of this board is, whether or not, and I think that the delineation is whether or not central was housed under the CFO or it stays in its present structure as it is now, under the COO's office.
Okay, so when, when CFO is chosen, we already have in place three, what was that title? Deputy Chief Deputy CFOs or whatever. So the new CFO, well, the CFO, I shouldn't say new, would have a chance to choose or pick their own?
Yes, ma'am. Because right now, the deputy CFOs are, we've had the luxury of some staff members to come back and step up to help provide some, some coverage in said space. But the two positions right now are vacant.
I guess, simple question is, what is the benefit of changing the structure? That's pretty much how I see it. What's the benefit of this?
So changing the structure from the CFO model to the finance director model? I think a lot is predicated upon whether or not there is a, a need of this board to, to revert back to some of the things that we've done in the past or not. I think, I think we're trying to be respectful of the fact that the board asked for a, a recommendation like a multiple options. And so the option was, you know, stay with our CFO model or revert back to our financial, our finance director model. And so I think they tried to provide you the pros and cons to both. You know, from a personal standpoint, I think it all is predicated upon policy direction of the board. If there is a need to have more forecasting in said space versus keeping afloat the financial side, then there is some merit to the CFO's role. If you want to have someone in space that is more taking care of just the day-to-day operations and you're not overly concerned about getting forecasts as far as trends, which you can have a financial advisor to do that, then the, the financial director model may be something that is more prevalent to the goal of your, of the policymakers.
And could we have a hybrid of both?
You could.
Have something that is with our current budget that is going to look at long-term strategic growth for our county, but also look at someone that's handling that day-to-day transactional operation.
Well, I think part of-
That falls in place of the deputy?
Yes.
Before we suspended or did away with the finance director, when we created the CFO position, the finance director was still in place.
That's correct.
CFO was over the finance director.
That is correct.
Yeah, but back to what Commissioner Davis was saying, that would be in place with your chief deputy CFO.
And that's why, my thing is, what, what's the benefit, what's the pitfalls, for me?
And so were you, and can I just, where you were saying that with the CFO, we would get more of a long-term status on where we're going financially? And so they would give, they would give us basically like a three-year report or three to five-year report of where we're going, things of that nature.
Yeah, as we're traveling or as we're dealing with inflationary markets and some of those areas, it's important that you have someone that can provide you a forecast on what may be happening in said space, so the CFO title and job responsibility can outline a lot of that for you. I think, I think the spirit of the request, again, Commissioner, was about ensuring that, based upon the question, we were trying to ensure that was responsive to the needs of this board, whether that's the finance director or the CFO, that ultimately we provide you some sense of pros and cons to the value of going in either one of those directions. But Commissioner Hambrick hit it on the head, the deputy CFO can play the role of being more transactional in space to support the CFO with the trends and investment side of the house if needed.
You have some to answer?
Good evening, Mac Underwood, Terminus. I think when you hire a CFO, especially if you can locate a CPA with the kind of background you, you want, you can do more of a three-to-five-year planning horizon, both on operations and on capital improvement process. Right now, I think the county is looking at one-year capital programs. But if you hired a CPA with the right kind of background, you'd develop a five-year CIP plan, which lets you know how much money you need to have to, to generate to fund that CIP plan. And they would also do three-to-five-year projections. Also, Pam mentioned, the pension plan, it's very important to have somebody with the right kind of knowledge and spirits and background to kind of serve on the pension plan, because that's all y'all benefits in the future. Every employee depends on that. That pension plan has got to be in good shape to be able to really fund the pension system on a long-term basis.
One last thing to add, Mac hit on something I thought was important. Part of the, the capital improvement plan that potentially would be in place, that would not replace our SPOSS program. But our SPOSS program right now is our capital improvement plan. So when we're trying to fund it every five years, it puts us sometime behind the eight ball to, and take care of what we consider, what we consider capitalizing the needs of, of our operations. By having a capital improvement plan that's looked upon yearly, having money allocate, allocated in space will help complement the SPOSS program. And so ultimately, having somebody in space helping manage that would also be beneficial to us.
Any other questions? Again, thank you for your presentation. And definitely have given us something to, to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last presentation is ARPA Small Business Grants update. Ms. Rock.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners and staff and citizens. This, purpose of this is just to give you an update on our American Rescue Plan Act business grants that you allocated five million dollars for last year. We have gone through the whole process of structuring it, figuring it out, then hiring an administrator. So I want to give you an update on where we are in expending the money for rounds one and two. And we have just a little bit left to finish out our last initiatives. Okay, we started our small business grant program with two administrators.
Okay, we started our small business grant program with two administrators, I Permetrics and M&amp;A Law PC. These are for rounds one and two, the program, this is just a summary, started. We launched the portal online on June twenty-eighth of this year. And we vigorously ran up to September twenty-ninth on those small business grants before we exhausted the money we allocated for small business grants. We decided we would give a blanket grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to eligible applicants. At the end of the process, two hundred and seventy-three businesses received this ten thousand dollar grant. And so the amount of funds dispersed to businesses was two thousand seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This thing is. Okay, you got me, is that my second slide? Okay. During the duration, you know, we set up an eight-five-five troubleshooting line or information line. Taking on a project on this size, as you can imagine, as momentum built, businesses told other businesses. And there were questions, people weren't privy to informational sessions. And so it was great, we had this one-eight-hundred or one-eight-five-five line set up, which has worked out very well for us. To date, it has received three thousand one hundred and ninety calls. The average length of a call showing out that it was four minutes forty-two seconds. Districts one and three, and remember callers identify what district they're from. And so eight hundred and eighty-three calls, districts two and four, two thousand three hundred and seven calls. Some of the takeaways that I want to mention on this part of the presentation is over fifty percent of the businesses that applied for the small business grant were found to be operating without a business license. That is an indelible loss of revenue to the county. And of course, it was a requirement to get the grant, so many of them would go over to get their license. In most cases, the businesses had been in business, they just hadn't renewed. And so it would be interesting to see what those numbers are by Mr. Tisdale, the business license manager, to see what, how much the revenue went up between June twenty-eighth, when we launched the portal, to the, around September thirtieth on that. But it does show that there needs to be some education. Many businesses were oblivious to the fact that they needed a business license, some of them said. So they felt like their Secretary of State certificate was enough. And so it's just an ongoing education, which does dovetail into other uses that the county has allocated ARPA funds for, like with the chamber and the small business classes, where we go over those things that education-wise, small business owners need to know. But just wanted to really make that point out that it was over fifty percent, according to the grant administrators, and that, that was, that was a lot because your application couldn't be processed. So many who applied had to be on hold, they were skipped over for a complete application in the system to be processed. And then we worked with the other businesses to submit and send in and, you know, so it caused for a great deal of administration. But notwithstanding that, a wonderful diverse mix of businesses expressed gratitude for the funding. And we're very happy, we actually ran into some problems with the US Mail. And it took a while for checks to be disseminated, so we created an on, in-person issuance of the checks. And so in doing so, we got a chance to interface with them. Do you have me on my next, advance me to the next, okay. Okay, so a little bit about the call center and what we found out through the calls coming in. I don't want to get ahead of myself. So from July fifth through the present, the call center, as I mentioned, took in about three, over three thousand phone calls from all districts of the county. Two hundred, or two thousand three hundred and thirty-two were unique callers, meaning new callers, calling in for the first time, inquiring. We got many calls from other counties, businesses that are in other counties of the metro area but have an affiliation in Clayton or they have, they do work in Clayton and they would ask general information. So it gave a chance really for just some general PR and informational exchange with callers. But the bulk of the calls, of course, were people wanting to know and ask questions about their unique business situation and how they could go about applying for funding and uploading documents and things of that nature. As you see, again, those are the numbers, this is the chart that came, I don't know if you can actually read that. But from the call center, it just gives the volume of calls and how many were unique and how many were just general information. Next screen, you'll see the analytics captured where the calls were coming from, twenty-three states and Ontario, Canada. As you see in the yellow, it's kind of small there, but the bulk came from Georgia, which is where we are. Others were just numbers and calls from those particular destinations, which are outside of our state. Next slide. As you can imagine, the call volume in peak times, when you launch a program like a grants program, you see from in July, it was a rather low volume because, you know, we were, as much as we did to get the word out, momentum really didn't build until the second round started, which you see it was our highest peak, which is right the end of August, right into September third. So that's about the time we started that second round and the momentum had gained. And then, of course, you know, you're a little bit on the less money side. But that graph shows pretty much what we expected it to be. You see there, just for your information, the average length of a call and how many calls were in those time brackets. You know, a quick call, you know, about a hundred and seventy-nine people for a thirty-second call versus those who had needed more of a conversation around eleven hundred of that three thousand. Next slide. Okay, that's a duplicate. Okay, so the amount of grants awarded by district. Total in blue there are your applicants and in the orange are the number that were approved. Again, we tried to stress that it is our express job to approve applications and get this money in the hands of our businesses. But of course, we had to comply with the ARPA guidelines and the guidelines of our application submittal requirements. So coming in from District One, we had a hundred and fifty-one total applicants. Fifty-seven businesses received the ten thousand dollar grant. District Two, a hundred and sixty-three applicants, eighty-one businesses approved. District Three, a hundred and forty, as you see, fifty-one approved. And District Four, two hundred and thirteen applicants, eighty-four approvals for a total of applications reviewed by our administrator. Six hundred and sixty-seven applications were reviewed and then two seventy-three approved. And again, that's because we set that budget at three million, so we're right under that, which we do pay our administration fee out of the grant. So that leaves that balance to get to three million. Can you go back to that screen, one more thing I wanted to say? It does make sense a little bit how the district numbers called and the volume there because like as in the case of District One, you just have a large, that's where our big employers are. Those are our job centers. And so they're not calling, even though we did reach out to them as we made business retention visits, some of our, because we made it, two hundred employees or less. But they did not reach out for the grant. But where the bulk of a lot of our small business grants are from, I would say that Riverdale Highway eighty-five and then going down one thirty-eight, that meshes through Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Davis's district. And then many businesses don't know what district they are in, but the numbers are exact. So I just wanted to make that point about where the big industry is and where the, your smaller shops are. Next slide. Okay, so and from a percentage-wise, this is the breakdown. As you see, District One, overall thirty-seven percent of all the grants administered went to that district and District Two, forty-nine percent. Thirty-six percent District Three and District Four, thirty-nine for total approvals, rather, across all districts. Forty percent approval rate of all applications that came in for each district were approved. Which goes to show there is more education that needs to be had. So businesses are eligible to not only receive this initiative, we don't know if another round of ARPA will come down from the federal government, but if there's another opportunity to infuse that kind of capital, it does your community no good if the businesses don't qualify because there are guidelines. Okay, next. So this is just some footage of round one and two's pickup days. Our media partner, Fusion Radio, located in Jonesboro, came out and did a live broadcast for us that day. These are business owners giving testimonials. Our great communication staff was there to record those soundbites. And there is volume to that, but that's, you know, fine. It was very exciting and the businesses were very grateful. Can you play it? Well, instead of time, we can just move on. Okay, next screen. And this was our, okay, so these are just photos of our check pickup days. Some folks had to come by the office, others came to meet us at our checkup, our check pickup location, which we did patronize our businesses that actually got the grant. So it was very exciting to interface with our businesses and talk to them and see them face-to-face rather than just an application, but it was very informative. Okay, next screen. And just to close out, coming up next, as you know, are our nonprofit organization grants. This, the purpose of this last initiative is to assist the nonprofits in the county that help in the categories of food, health, human services, housing, youth and families, et cetera. Our awards start at a minimum of five thousand and are up to twenty thousand dollars per grant. The organizations need to hold an active tax exempt status from the IRS and they need to have an establishment date by January one, twenty-twenty-one, in line with the ARPA rules. They need to serve Clayton County residents. And we are requiring that they submit the IRS Form nine ninety. That is a form that they file back to the IRS that lets them know the amount of revenue that they took in. It gives us a picture of what they receive, what kind of work they do. And that's going to help our administrators qualify them for receiving the grant. Next slide, just real quick, just so you'll know and be aware. And if you need more information to put in newsletters and things, we can send this in a succinct snapshot. But we held an informational session for all the nonprofits in the county last Monday. We had eighty-eight registrants in the room, which was dynamic. We gave them a short timeline because the application is short, it's, which is November ninth, but they can still apply, the portal's open right now. It is active through the county's website. You can find the banner and click on businessgrants.claytoncountyga.gov. November eleventh, preliminary reviews are going on right now with our grant administrator for those that are in the portal. And then we decided it would be great to have our nonprofits, rather than just a paperwork administrative view, have them all do a pitch session to where they tell us, they answer seven questions that we've outlined. What do you do, why are you important, why did you start, you know, why did your organization start in the first place? Who do you serve, et cetera? And we'll invite you to that, that'll be great. We have partnered with Clayton County Youth Commission, which are our students, Dr. Biese gave such a great presentation. They are going to sit and hear these pitch sessions and help us rate. And that's how we'll decide how much nonprofits will get in their grant. And we hope to have our winners awarded by November the twenty-ninth, so they can have the monies before the holidays because many of their initiatives are certainly, they need the funding in place by that time. Next screen. Here's just a flyer that's out now, you may see this around. There's the portal address for the purpose of those in the audience tonight or looking online. And those, that was our nonprofit session, so you see how full the room was. And we learned, I learned of just some amazing nonprofits that are here in the county. I had no idea, they each stood up and gave a twenty-second spiel of what they do and who they serve. And it was something certainly very much to be proud of. Next screen. After we finish, those are just more pictures of the session. After we close out our nonprofit session, we want to use the last amount of money left over for our commercial beautification grants. Please let us know if you have any questions or objection, but we think this will be a dynamic way to identify strip plazas in the county, in each district. The grants are only for exterior improvements in the area of landscaping, painting, signage and parking lot resurfacing. And so we are very excited that that will cause some visual improvements in areas that needed. And that's why we are hand-selecting those sites in each district. So we'll keep you informed that that goes around. We understand we can't do outdoor painting until maybe after March, so. But just to let you know, and go up one, Sinclair, one more screen. This will, no, forward, yes, so you'll see that flyer also. And that's it.
All right, I love the last flyer about the beautification project. I think that'd be a big help to helping with our beautification efforts.
Yeah.
I also got a comment on the information session with the nonprofits. I did sit in on a little while as that went on and it was very informative. You know, when you hear each organization talk about what they actually do. And I thought I knew what a lot of them, what they do throughout the county, but they definitely opened my eyes. So there's more work and help to be had around the county when it comes to our nonprofits. But they are truly doing some good work in Clayton County. Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Well, a very good point you made about some of the businesses, small businesses, thought that the Secretary of State's license was all they needed. So I know I talked to several businesses that said, oh, I didn't know I needed to be licensed in Clayton County. So that revenue should go up some.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Now, the call center I want to ask you about.
Okay.
Was that created through?
It was created through our third-party administrator. We made it as a scope of work that we gave Ms. Rogers when we put this out to bid for a third-party administrator. We told them that you have to establish a hotline, a call line for people to ask informational questions because we knew we couldn't handle the volume with just our three staff members in the department. And so, yes, they, we had two vendors in the beginning. And so the second, M&amp;A Law, created the call center line.
Are they here tonight?
And all of them used it.
No, they are not here tonight.
I just wanted to, you know, let them know that they, I think, as far as District Two was concerned, we were very pleased with the response or whatever and with that hotline. People actually answered the phone.
Yes.
And, and they, you know, gave out good information, so I hope. And maybe we can have that model with this department that we're talking about with the grants or whatever. With, with, I don't know, maybe that may be something that.
And we have even talked about, I certainly see the value in, while we're in the lull, going from the round one and two, entering into nonprofit, we kept the line open. We closed it at first when we were going from just round one to two. And it was just a nightmare, people were like, I can't get in on the call line, I got a question. So we decided to keep it running concurrently. And there's a lot of value in just having a line that businesses can call to ask a question or to get help or to find out the resources available for our business. So, yes.
We referred quite a few to them, so.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rock?
I have a question. We talked about, how many registered nonprofits do we have within the county so far?
We found, Commissioner Anderson, we reached out to the Department of Community Development and we first asked them, send us a list of all the registered nonprofits in the county. So it was about fifty-six. And then we found other nonprofits that are in the county and longstanding, but they just weren't registered. They didn't have a business license. And we don't charge a fee for nonprofits, but we asked them to register to get their license.
So they have to, and I want to clarify that for the nonprofits that are listening because they did ask. Because most nonprofits don't feel like they need a business license because they're a nonprofit.
Right.
So they, please clarify that for the nonprofits so they will know when that is one of the requirements. Is that correct for them to have a business license?
Yes, we are asking them to have a business license, yeah, because that's how we know that you have a Clayton County address and that you're here. And we do reassure them that it's, there's no fee. But it, it just helps us, you know, and we, what we did find going forward, we'd like to keep a registry of all the nonprofits in the county, maybe a brochure or some- a registry of all the nonprofits in the county, maybe a brochure or something, so that we are aware of just all the different services that are out there and available from the nonprofit community to our citizens.
Oh, I know, the amount of money we have to be spent by these nonprofits, what's the balance of that?
For how much of the remaining 2 million are we going to allocate for nonprofit grants?
No, there was a deadline and an amount given that has to be spent by December.
Oh, I don't have that deadline. I think mine is December of next year or the...
Oh, okay.
Yes, mine is like 2024.
Right. The funding commissioner you're talking about is ERA funding. That's December of 29th of this year, and that's the other nonprofits that you all approve tonight. But I also wanted to bring to the table that Tuesday night, you also will be voting on M&amp;A as the third-party administrator to assist those nonprofits. So that will be coming back to you on Tuesday night as well.
Okay, is that the same group?
Yes, that's the same group, yes. They'll be overseeing, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rocker? All right. Well, thank you for your presentation and I believe that was the last presentation for the night, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.